Uh, bear one second.
See that?
Okay. Okay.
Now you can't see it.
Yeah, yeah. Um, let me do this. Yeah, I don't want that. But we're gonna... We're, we're gonna zip through, uh, this here and John may have to help me with some of it, uh, uh, with the PowerPoint. Okay. Uh, we will start with the roll call. Knight.
Yes. Here.
Alt. Can see you. Genzik. No. Nichols. Von Trager.
Yes.
Vilio.
Here.
Here. And, uh, caller one, um, is that you, Tom Amor? No, you're the other. Um, by chance, Renee Walkley, is that you on caller one? Okay, we don't know who that is. We do have a form, we have, uh, five people present.
Mike, did you hear me more than caller one? So I, I had it muted.
Mike, did you hear Carl?
Uh, I got okay, this is now, who is caller one again?
Okay. Sure. Well, agenda.
No, we need to know caller one as first. Does that mean yourself and identify?
Caller one is Tom Amor. Tom Mueller.
Uh, Amor, A-M-O-R, I'm with the sign company.
Okay, got it. And we, we've connected two ways. Okay. No, that is, um, uh, Nick.
Okay, so. My motion.
Repeat, I'm not sure what he said.
The approval. In that, do we have?
I'll make the motion, approve the agenda.
Second.
Oh, I'll second.
Alt.
Yeah.
Nichols.
Yes.
Genzik.
Yes.
Vilio.
Yes.
Knight.
Yes.
Walkley. Von Trager.
Yes.
Nick, proceed.
Again, next one is approval, Dennis, or any corrections or additions? I'm hoping.
I move that we adopt the minutes as presented.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Hey, Mike.
Uh, Knight.
Yes.
Von Trager.
Yes.
Nichols.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Genzik.
Yes.
Vilio.
Yes.
Walkley. Nick, uh, go ahead and proceed.
Okay, public hearing. All right, that's up to you.
Uh, I'm gonna refer everyone, uh, quickly to the, uh, staff report from, uh, Phil Seabird and the Cadillac Castle Project. Variances were approved, um, both in the fall of 2008 and in the spring of 2019, uh, allowing for dimensional variances. Um, according to the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, the variances stay with the property, um, basically forever. But there is a section in our ordinance that basically says on developments, they distinguish between buildings and developments, but this is a development, clearly because it involves new, uh, curbs, new utilities, sewer water, all of this sort of thing. But essentially, um, if construction does not start, uh, within a one-year period, it needs to come back, uh, before you, um, for review, an extension, just so they can, uh, get the building permits and demolition permit and everything started. Uh, in talking with, uh, Brad Newman from MSU, he basically explained that even though the variance extends, uh, to the future, he said some communities have this particular, um, thing in their ordinance so that it gives them a chance to review if things don't get started within a year, to just make sure the circumstances do not change. And in this case, the circumstances have not changed. Uh, they're not asking for any, uh, additional dimensional variances. Um, they just need this so that when they apply for this federal program to the Michigan Housing Development, uh, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, um, that, uh, if they are granted at this time around, uh, they can get going and get started. So, um, on that particular thing, I'm here, if you have any questions, please ask me. Phil Seibert is also here, so if you have any questions on the project and the application that he will be filing, um, very, very soon, uh, to try and participate in this federal program again, uh, please ask Phil any questions or me, so I'll just leave it open for that.
So, so there's no changes at this point to what's, what was presented before and it's just an extension?
Um, correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? I get a motion.
I'll make the motion that we extend it for one more year.
Okay.
Okay.
Um, I, I apologize, I did, uh, mention in the staff report, it's not necessary, but a possible condition, um, allowing an, an administrative extension for possibly up to one year, so that if, for example, their application is unsuccessful this year, um, if they wanted to reapply next year, they wouldn't have to come back before you. Truthfully, it does not matter either way, so I just wanted to mention that. But I'm, I'm comfortable with the motion as is, Troy.
Let's leave it for one year.
Okay. And can I ask again who seconded that?
Hi, Dave.
Got it.
Okay.
Nichols.
Yes.
Von Trager.
Yes.
Genzik.
Yes.
Walkley. Knight.
Yes.
Alt.
Yes.
Vilio.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone, Phil, you're on the, uh, line with us, so let's, let's get that thing going, let's, let's, uh, let's, let's, uh, let's, let's get it this time and get it built.
Yes, thank you, uh, and board members, appreciate your, uh, work on this this evening, our application is due February 1st and, uh, we're very hopeful this time, this is our fourth F- application on this project, so, uh, we hope it happens this time, but we'll, we'll keep the city informed, thank you.
Good luck, Phil.
Thank you.
Okay, just continue on with the next one.
Um, one thing I, I, uh, did, I just noticed that is not on the agenda, um, and I think we, um, probably should mention, um, uh, technically it should be open at some point early on, such as this for public comment, if anyone has it, if it's public comment with regard to the application, that should probably wait, uh, until after the presentation, but, um, that was not in there. Um, Nick, if you could just ask if there's any public comments prior to, unrelated to the next application, um, that would be, uh, that would be great, and then I'll move on and, uh, present the information I have.
Is there any public comment? I hear nobody, so.
I will, I will proceed. Uh, what we have is, uh, the application, you have your staff report, it's from a company called Fresh Coats Provisioning, and they were awarded one of the permits, uh, the business will be called Doomgrass, they were awarded one of the recreational, I believe it was recreational marijuana, um, Nick, you can correct me, but I believe it was that, and, um, they were awarded one of the two, and the location, um, that, uh, basically they're going into, it's, it's been approved, is in the lower level, uh, of the building 115 North Mitchell. And, uh, basically the ordinance reads, um, that the marijuana retail businesses uh, downtown cannot have entryways and signage on Mitchell Street. Their entrance, their signage, everything has to be in the back of the building, which happens to be Elk, uh, Avenue, which is a public street. Um, you receive a, a narrative, an ex- explanation of the signage and what they're requesting, uh, from Mitchell's original business. And, uh, essentially what I wanna do is briefly touch on the, uh, I wanna touch on the staff report, and, uh, then there'll be one other thing I wouldn't get into. Uh, basically what they're asking for is a, uh, projecting sign off of the original building, which is Elk Avenue. Um, the projecting sign, uh, the concept they sent us will extend approximately sixty inches from the wall, which is five feet. Uh, the ordinance allows for forty-two inches on a projecting sign. Uh, they're also, uh, proposing a sign that is thirteen point eight seven five square feet in size, uh, and that's measuring as a rectangle, so this is, uh, kind of an oval shape, so, uh, but they do have us measure it as a rectangle. Uh, for reference, that is almost identical in square footage as to the sign, this, uh, Clam Lake Beer, theirs is also, uh, uh, I think just over thirteen, uh, square feet. So, this is what they're proposing, you've seen the concept. Um, what I do want to quickly get into, and here's where I'm gonna try and share a screen, and, uh, what I'm asking is, uh, let me know if you can see it, um, and I will keep talking while I share the screen, John just walked in to help me here.
Mike, can I, can I ask a question before we move forward?
Uh, yes.
Tell us who decided that there would be no signage on Main Street, was that a city council decision? Or who, who made that decision?
The ordinance that pretty good marijuana legislation. Yes, that was in the ordinance that, uh, first went through Planning Commission and Council, so that was a part of the ordinance, um, with the new, uh, you know, the new amendment to the ordinance, so yes, ultimately, it was, uh, City Council's decision, and as I understand it, it's just for what we call the B2 core downtown district. Um, I, I think in the B3 district, it's, i- it is allowed off of, for example, Mitchell Street. So, okay, does that help?
Yeah, it does, just wanna make that clear.
Okay, now I'm gonna try and get this thing up here. PowerPoint first. Okay, oh, then share. Okay, can, uh, can all of you s- see that picture there, I'm gonna, that, that is not of this, I'm gonna get to it. Uh, can you see the, uh, picture of the rear of the building?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Um, basically, this is the rear of the building, uh, which is Elk Avenue, where the proposed projecting sign would go. And, uh, again, I just, I went over the dimensions, uh, it's allowed for forty-two inches of projection, it's allowed for six square feet, and they are asking for, uh, five feet of projection, sixty inches, and thirteen point eight seven square feet. Um, I quickly want to just go through the review standards, and, uh, now that I know you can see it, I'll just quickly read this. "The zoning board of appeals may authorize a variance in the strict application of the provisions of the zoning ordinance whereby reason of exceptional narrowness, shallowness, shape, or area of a specific piece of property at the time of enactment of the ordinance, or by reason of exceptional conditions of such property. The strict application of the regulations enacted would result in peculiar or exceptional practical difficulties, two, or exceptional undue hardship upon the owner of such property." Um, so that is a big question with this particular one, and I will quickly address it, um, here just in a couple minutes. Uh, the other review standards I wanna go over, which we all are familiar with, and these are in the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, and rather than have a lengthy PowerPoint like I have in council chambers and my technological limitations with, uh, this type of thing, uh, I'm basically gonna read these and, uh, describe my findings. Um, number one, the requested variance shall not, uh, impair an adequate supply of light and air to the adjacent property. Uh, we as staff do not feel that it's going to affect, uh, supply of air or, uh, light to the area. Uh, the second standard is the requested variance will not unreasonably increase congestion in public streets. Elk Alley is a public street, there is no question, uh, Doomgrass, if they are successful in their business, we obviously are gonna see additional traffic on Elk Avenue, but quite frankly, the sign has nothing to do with that. Um, the congestion will be just because it's a successful business and that's where the entryway is. Uh, if the entryway were on Mitchell Street, it would probably be, you know, different, but with, uh, the entranceway having to be off Elk Al- Avenue, um, clearly there may be increased traffic on Elk Avenue. And, uh, quite frankly, for them to be successful, we want that to happen. The third standard is the requested variance will not increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety. We do not feel the variance request for this signage will affect that in any way, shape, or form, um, and in fact, from a fire and public safety standpoint, um, sitting here in City Hall and where that entryway is, uh, um, I couldn't throw a rock that far, but I could sure hit a golf ball that far, so they're very, very close to the fire department. The fourth standard, uh, the requested variance will not unreasonably diminish or impair established property values within the surrounding area. We certainly feel that is not the case, and quite frankly, the owner of this building and the neighboring building to the north has spent substantial sums of money, um, improving the appearance of the building, both inside and outside. They've redone the front awning, they've redone the interior paint, carpet, and this is throughout the entire building, and they are doing similar improvements to the location, uh, of 115 North Mitchell, they also own 117 North Mitchell. Uh, the fifth standard is the requested variance will not impair the public health, safety, comfort, morals, or welfare of the inhabitants of the city. We certainly don't feel this is going to impair public health, safety, morals, welfare to the inhabitants of the city, so we don't see any issues from that. Uh, going back, um, the biggest issue I think we as staff, um, feel is that simply we cannot identify a practical difficulty. Um, and that's where the narrative from the applicant, um, and when the applicant chose, chooses to speak, um, he can explain maybe more of that. Uh, next, I wanna address public notices. Um, public notices were put in the newspaper and mailed to all property owners within three hundred feet of the subject site. We have heard from two downtown property owners. Um, one just looking for information, uh, the other wanted information, and I received a letter from him, basically a cute age letter, uh, which I did, uh, I got it this morning, so I emailed it to all of you, I don't know if you've all read it or not, um, but it's from Keith Panen, uh, he owns property downtown. Um, when I get back to the screen where I can see you, um, if you would like me to read it, I can, but clearly, uh, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it, Nick read it when he got here tonight, 'cause he's in City Hall, um, but he is, uh, against, uh, uh, the zoning board of appeals, uh, granting the variance. And, uh, he specifically mentioned that, you know, he does not feel there is a hardship or practical difficulty, but, uh, we'll discuss that in a minute. Um, prior to, um, Nick being able to speak and all of you asking me questions or others, um, the board action will basically be based on a finding of compliance or non-compliance with the standards of the ordinance, the board shall approve, approve with conditions, or deny the variance application. Reasonable conditions may be attached to an approval in order to achieve compliance with the standards of the ordinance. And again, I just ended it with a picture of the rear of the building, and I am going to see if I can get onto the share screen so that I can kinda see everybody and answer questions.
Is there any questions to make?
So, uh, Mike, what, so what was the, the, I, I didn't get a chance to read the letter, but what was his dispute, that he felt the, the person that was writing saying that it didn't, he didn't think it, it should happen, I mean, give us just a quick scenario.
I, I will give you a, yes, exactly, okay. Um, basically, again, he, he, he is against granting the variance. He basically starts with my comments are two-fold. One, um, focus on the state law variance requirements, um, practical difficulty, un- unnecessary hardship, and he says, absence of su- said hardships or difficulties, um, in unique circumstances, um, he feels that the applicant's variance arguments, uh, just don't meet that standard. Um, he, he basically says that, he doesn't feel the applicant, uh, presents a good reason uh, for hardship or practical difficulty. Uh, item B, he says, simply in the narrative, the applicant has admitted to self-creating the hardship or practical difficulty. And, uh, lastly, in the letter, um, the narrative from Nick Pied- Piedmont, um, he, he writes about the hardship, all of you have his narrative, and he feels it's uniquely tied to the use and does not exist generally throughout the city.
So, Mike, quick, it depends on, the owner, is he an owner of property downtown close to this location, is that?
He, he owns the buildy, building in the, um, downtown DDA district, it's a small office building on Spruce Street.
Okay.
Yep, it's on Spruce. Uh... So he just, he feels they don't make a good argument, I mean, you'll have a chance to read it later, but without reading two pages, he, he clearly feels that they don't, do not make a good argument for a practical difficulty and the need of a variance for signage.
I mean, we sort of set the precedence when we allow Clam Lake to do their signage, I mean, this, this is where we fall into that, that hole of, you know, we can't pick and choose. If, if we say that, you know, Clam Lake can do their signage, then we can't deny these people their signage when they fall into that same category, because he's not happy because maybe he didn't get the tenant, or whatever reason, he doesn't like this, this, you know, variance. I mean, you know, that's why we have to be careful when we pick and choose what we choose to, uh, you know, allow and not allow. And how does it rest in your field?
E- each case has its own pluses or minus, that's where you gotta look at, not ones that have been done.
No, but you have to, you have to look.
Or whatever, you gotta look at just one particular one.
Yeah, but you have to look at what we decide, we just can't say, you know, if we don't agree with a marijuana shop, or we agree with it or don't agree with it, I mean, there's nothing to do with it.
I, that's why I look at, I'm not looking at what's gonna be, yeah, I'm looking at the signs.
Right.
And the area. I mean, it could be a... So, right, still. You know, that part don't bother me one way or the other.
In the sign ordinance.
Carl, will you, oh, um, I would, the only thing I would add is, um, and, and I, boy, I, Troy, you, you hit the nail on the head, um, and, and I get it, and I get it, Nick. Um, the only, uh, thing I wanna throw in there, and I know it was in your staff report, is, um, certainly the size of this sign in square footage is very, very comparable to Clam Lake. With respect to the projection, um, the Clam Lake, they asked for a variance of three inches, and this is a variance of eighteen inches. So, it's, you know, it's, it's substantially more, and honestly, um, this, in my opinion, is also gonna have, if, if it, if it is approved, greater than forty-two inches, I believe City Council's gonna have to approve it because Elk Alley is a right-of-way, and you can't build anything over the right-of-way without City Council's approval.
Can we open this up, uh, I believe to Nick, to give us the explanation of why he feels he needs the size of this sign?
That's coming, hold on.
Maybe you should be able to unmute yourself.
Is that me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me, okay?
You need my address for the records.
Uh, is it possible, uh, I've been getting some feedback too during the meeting, so, um, if everyone else were on mute or something, that might be... I appreciate that, thank you. Uh, hey, good evening, uh, uh, my name is Nick Piedmont, uh, I'm a resident of the city of Traverse City, do you need my, you want my address? Yeah, it's a nine-one-one.
Nick, I have you on record and your address is on your application, but we have it on record, so we're, we're, we're... I've got enough info there.
Thanks, Mike, I appreciate it. Uh, I, uh, am the CEO of Doomgrass, um, we're a marijuana retailer, we're based out of Traverse City. Um, just, oh, briefly about us, I, we have existing facilities in, uh, Manistee and Big Rapids. Um, our location at 115 North Mitchell Street would be our third of five locations that we plan to have open this year. Um, our, uh, marijuana permit, we're one of the two adult use permits that were approved, uh, it, by the city of Cadillac, that took place at the beginning of September, after a nine-month application and, uh, competitive bid process. Uh, our corresponding, uh, special land use permit was issued by the planning commission at the end of October. Um, we're working with the local general contractor, Ken Orshaw, and, uh, who, uh, received a building permit, I think in November, and we've been working on, um, the interior construction of our facility ever since. Um, drywall just went up, uh, last week, uh, no, this week, um, painters are coming through, starting on Monday, so, uh, we've made, uh, substantial progress just, um, on the build-out, we hope to be ready to greet customers, um, at the facility in, in March. Um, you know, from my perspective, and, you know, I'm a li- I'm, uh, somewhat familiar with, um, you know, dimensional variances and the sort of practical difficulty test, but, uh, you know, from, from my perspective, it's, it's really the, the permit restrictions, the, the two layers of permit restrictions, one for the marijuana permit itself, and then the, the second following with this, through the special land use process, um, that really become, that create the, the practical difficulty and the hardship. Uh, the, the permit restrictions that the city's placed on us, uh, require that we use the rear entrance off of Elk Avenue only, and that customers cannot access the facility from Mitchell Street proper. So where any other business in the B2 district would have the total square footage of signage from the front and the rear, we're limited to only one of those facades. Um, obviously, it's like a downtown road building, so the two side elevations are like locked with the neighboring buildings. Um, so, you know, our, our, our hands are sort of tied as it pertains to, uh, just, just the amount of signage that, that we're able to display to, uh, you know, to the community. Uh, in light of these limitations and, and the sort of unique set of circumstances that we're faced with, um, you know, we're, we're requesting a sign variance so... we're, we're requesting a signed variance so that we can just display what we deem would be sort of an effective amount of signage on Elk Avenue. Um, you know, and, and I assume that any other business in the district would, would sort of do something similar. Um, uh, just briefly about the, uh, projection. It's just sort of a function of the shape of our logo that it's, that an oval shape is sort of what suits the, um, the, you know, the brand. Um, and that, and that tends to project out. And then, you know, to Mike's point about the three inches versus eighteen inches, you know, variance, um, there just happens to be a light pole next to where we would install the sign. So, you know, just boots-on-the-ground reality, we sort of need to get the, the sign projected out past sort of width of the light pole there. Um, otherwise there wasn't anything, you know, about eighteen inches versus three inches that, um, you know, we, there's nothing special about doing it eighteen inches, right? We just wanna, we just wanna get the sign out, um, so that we, we feel like, um, customers could sort of see that and, um, from, from both sides. Um, you know, we, we, uh, you read the narrative, I'm sure, you know, uh, we drafted that. We feel like our request does meet the standards set forth in the ordinance. It's certainly not self-created, uh, despite what, you know, the gentleman in the letter wrote. Appreciate his correspondence on the matter. Um, you know, to that point, sometimes our industry attracts attention just because we are who we are and we do what we do. So I'm not saying that that is, is what transpired here, but, um, that, that can happen. Um, and I guess just briefly, uh, I invited, uh, my partner here, Tom Amor, who, um, runs Amor Signs out of Manistee, um, and designed the sign concept, um, to sort of speak a little bit further, uh, as to some specifics, um, and, and some of the technicalities about why we selected the shape and size and, and projection and stuff like that that we did. Um, so, um, barring no technical difficulties, Tom, uh, are you able to unmute and maybe add, uh, add a few more notes?
Mike, before, Nick, before that, Mike, can you bring up the picture so that we can see exactly what he's referring to as far as the pole that might be blocking the sign? Can you bring that back up again?
I think it was on, uh, Mike, I think it was right on the first page of your PowerPoint here. Oh, hey, there you go, Blue Angel.
So what, what pole are you referring to?
So you see the light, there's, yeah, just the wooden light pole there.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm not really see, I'm, I'm not for or against the, at this point, but I'm not seeing where that pole would interfere with your signage for, for the amount that you're asking for, so. Okay.
Uh, this is, uh, Tom Amor, is it all right for me to speak at this time?
You just have to state your name, address, for records, or do you have it, Mike?
My name is, uh, Tom H. Amor, uh, four thirty-two Fourth Street, Manistee, Michigan. And I'm representing Amor Sign Studios who put the sign proposal together. Um, as, as for the camera angle of this shot, it's looking north. From the other end of the, uh, Elk Street or Elk Avenue, uh, that utility pole sticks out twenty inches fr, from the wall. So it does kind of block if you're heading south. Uh, to give you an idea of the projection, that existing canopy is forty-two inches and that would be the limit of the, the projection and under the code. And we, we felt getting it out because of that twenty-inch utility pole would make, make it a better use. We kind of played around design-wise. The letter D in Dune Grass with a five-foot projection is nine inches from the bottom of the curve of the D. It's a lowercase d. Uh, going to the top of the ascender of the letter D is nine inches. If we make that oval, if we bring it in proportionally, so we're only forty-two inches out, it, it reduces the size of that letter D to six inches. And we, we just felt a better recommendation for visibility and on that rear entrance, on the alley entrance, that, uh, the, the sixty-inch projection made more sense.
Mike, that wouldn't interfere with any of the, uh, like, delivery vehicles or anything like that, would it?
Well, I, you know, simply put, having worked in the trucking business for over thirty years, when you build something that extends over a, uh, public street, public right-of-way, and you have delivery trucks, you have cloud trucks, you have the city's street cleaning vehicles, um, things that project out, um, do become an obstacle. And in the trucking industry, you know, you, you have utility lines going into businesses and shipping areas and everything's supposed to be higher than fourteen feet off the ground. And, um, so, you know, that kind of thing, uh, in our core downtown district, uh, signage is not allowed to be that high. And I, I guess if I'm just gonna throw something out here, you know, you're looking at the picture looking to the north and if that wall that we're looking at is owned by the owner of one fifteen North Mitchell, could possibly a wall sign be put on?
And I just want to throw this out there also, I think this is a destination business. This isn't a, oh, look at the sign, we need to stop there. I mean, people who are looking for this type of business knows that they're gonna do their research and look for it. So I don't think, necessarily think that the signage is a make or break for the business. And I'm not saying we're against it at this point, but I'm just saying it's a destination business.
And I go through a couple of times and, uh, building next to a, has flat sign, you know, on the wall, and you can read what they, what they say, because you're not gonna go through the alley real fast.
But on the other hand, I'm also conflicted because the city is penalizing them, putting them in the alley versus having front street signage or visibility also. So I'm sort of conflicted in, when it comes to that, so.
The way I look at it, like Mike said, it's an accident, look for a place to happen with a sign sticking out over where people get, you know, trucked away where it can hit it.
I, I was just gonna say, all, I mean, all things being equal, I mean, we prefer to have the wall sign on Mitchell Street, you know? I mean, that's, that's where the, that's where the traffic is. So, uh, you know, I mean, our, our, you know, it, our hands are tied. Um, you know, again, I, I think we're, we're trying to come to the ZBA here in good faith and, and just try and come up with a reasonable solution. If there's something specific about the technic, the sort of technical aspects of the sign that we've proposed to you guys, perhaps, you know, there's a, a way to condition the, um, you know, the, the proposal while sort of, you know, accomplishing the same goals. Um, you know, if, if the production needs to be less than eighteen or, or what have you, you know? I mean, maybe, maybe those are things we could work with. Um, but, or maybe the state, you know, being a little bit different than an oval, we just, you know, I felt like the oval, the oval works because of the length of the name and the icon or whatever, but, um, you know.
Mike, can you clarify as to far, how far out the sign would stick from what's the picture you're showing right now? As far as projecting out into the alley, road or street?
Uh, I measured the, and, and Leo, he's gonna have a question here too, so let's not forget him. Um, I measured the projection of that, um, awning over the entryway and it actually sticks forty-eight inches out, um, from the wall, which is another question that the city's gotta get into because we're not finding where, um, that particular awning, which is relatively new, was properly approved, but that's a different issue for us to deal with. But that awning sticks out forty-eight inches, so the projecting sign that's proposed would stick out an additional twelve inches.
Yeah, and, uh.
Mike, these are new ordinances that were just adopted by the city, is that correct?
Uh, obviously the signage, but the, uh, marijuana retail business is absolutely very brand-new, um, in the fall of twenty-twenty, and I believe I'm correct, Nick.
So in, um, seventy-five, no.
Sorry, was that to me? Yes, uh, yeah, the fall, um, well, the ordinance was completed actually, I think, in January. Um, and there was a, you know, a delay for a couple of different reasons, and they began accepting applications. Um, or excuse me, they closed the application window, I think, in March and, um, then a global pandemic hit, and then we lost six months because of all that, and then, uh, we ended up completing all that in the fall.
Yes, Nick, Nick, you are correct. It was, I, it was early twenty-twenty and then because of a variety of things, uh, everything was just kind of delayed. Uh, and then you finally got your approval in the fall of twenty-twenty, correct? Leo, um, again, yes, the, the ordinance with respect to the marijuana retail businesses in the business districts, the, the B two, the B three, um, those are new, uh, within the past year. But the signed ordinance was not changed.
Correct, so in, um, as part of the, what the city council recently adopted, um, in seven-five-two, um, they say signage for marijuana establishments may be approved pursuant to the generally applicable procedures and standards provided in six-sixty-four, which is the, the area that we're talking about. So the, they obviously considered the fact that, um, they were not going to allow signage on Mitchell Street. They were only going to put signage on one side, and that was part of the decision that they made. When we look at, um, the standards under six-sixty-four, there are all about eight or ten standards. One of them, uh, Troy, that I'd point out for you is that, is, uh, the second. And basically what it says is just simply because we've approved something in the past that has no bearing on what we're doing, uh, granting a variance in the future. Um, things, things may change and, um, yeah. Uh, as I read your replies here, the hardship essentially seems to be saying that we have a hardship because we can only put a sign on one side. And therefore we ought to have a, a larger, uh, more intrusive sign.
Well, I think they're saying the telephone pole is also a hardship. Our pole.
Well, the telephone pole's not gonna be an issue when you're southbound because you're gonna be on the, the far side of the road.
Right.
You, you, you still go through, go, go through that, that pole's not gonna be a factor. If you're going through there at thirty-five miles an hour, eh, pole would be a little bit of a problem.
It's not thirty-five through there.
I know, like I said, if you're going through there, is it like a reasonable person would go through there? It's no problem.
I agree with you, Troy, that this is a destination business. People will know where they're going and they will get there. Uh, even, even if they don't know where they're going, they will get there.
This is the tough one.
Okay. Any more questions or comments here?
I, Nick, is, is, is there?
If, if, if I were gonna hang my head on this being a destination business, I mean, I wouldn't have spent, you know, two hours putting together the narrative and spent the hundred and fifty-dollar application fee to try and get the projecting sign, you know, in front of the zoning board of appeals. I mean, it, it, is there a practical difficulty or not? I mean, I, I, I feel like that's a reasonable place to have a debate here this evening. I mean, relating to what Dune Grass feels like as effective signage for its business in Cadillac. I, you know, I, I don't know that that's really, um, the place of the city of Cadillac to sort of, you know, be involved in some of those decisions. I mean, I thi, we, you know, so, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I, I understand your point about southbound traffic. I understand the point about, you know, traffic probably only drives X number of miles per hour through the alley, things of that nature, you know? I mean, we've, we've, we've looked at this, um, you know, up, 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 down and sideways and, you know, we, we really felt like the projecting sign was the apparatus that would allow us the, um, you know, visibility that, that we felt like the business deserved. You know, there is sort of a piece in your code, and I think I, uh, put it in my, um, you know, application just pertaining to, you know, um, how it's generally recognized that good signage is necessary to the commerce, health, safety and general welfare of the public, right? So, um, you know, I, I mean, to the extent that we can debate what good, good versus not good signage is, right? But, um, so, anyway, um, I gu, I guess those were just some additional thoughts based on the discussions I was hearing, but.
Well, we're not saying you can't have a sign, we're just saying I don't think it should, firstly, it should be that big. I mean, it just should be the, fit to, the ordinance what says, and it'd be just fine, or especially for.
It's literally the exact thing where, in terms of size, that Clam Lake's is. I mean, that, that wasn't a, that wasn't an accident that we made it the same size as the projecting side that Clam Lake had approved, right? I mean, so.
Like you, like you said earlier, each case is separate. Now, Clam Lake really don't, isn't part of this, this is, this one here.
Nick, and I, and I get the fact, I had a business, businesses in Cadillac for thirty years and I understand it's all about signage. I guess you can make it the most, you know, visible business. But when we go, look at Clam Lake, they are projecting over a sidewalk where you're projecting over a street. So we have to look at the fact that, you know, is that going to protrude out into the street enough that it's going to stop? Now, I'm, I'm torn at this point. I, I mean, I understand that you're being penalized by not having a sign out front, that you're having it in the back. You know, we, we, we can argue over that, um, at this point, I'm not saying one way or the other. Um, I understand your frustration and I'm just trying to, to figure out what a, you know, affair. Could you make a sign that fits into the criteria that we're asking for? That.
The forty-two inches?
Yeah, I mean, would it be something that, you know, it, it would work as far as, you know, if, if someone's going through the alley at five miles an hour, would be able to see from both directions?
Yeah, I, I think Tom, uh, was gonna, was gonna sort of, um, elaborate on that point. I don't know, did, if we lost him or, um.
Uh, I'm, I'm still here, I'm waiting my turn. Uh, I just had a, a couple of points, I guess, on signage. In Manistee in the downtown historic district, a projecting sign is allowed to be sixteen square feet. Thirteen square feet doesn't seem like a large sign to me.
They're not projecting.
One of the things I like to do with, with signage, we talked a little bit about, oh, is this a destination business or not? One of the things sign companies and planning associations agree on, and we've had a lot of cooperation in the last decade. And we focus on measurable things and one of them is, is safety. So if you have a, a motorist trying to find a site from out of town and, uh, let's say they're using a GPS and, and they know it's on the backside, when they're on one of those side streets and they look down the alley, if they can read and that sign, you know, from half a block away, then they can say, oh, I can park at this parking spot and they can make a safe decision to, to find the parking spot and, uh, prevent some of that congestion we talked about. One last point I'd like to make is, is on the safety. We do a lot of work with gasoline and petroleum stations. And when we make, we, we've made gas canopies, um, that you drive under when you pump your gas. And the, the standard height of clearance that we make, we want to be above fourteen foot six. In the, uh, drawing that we submitted with the application that shows the sign from the, when you aim south, it appears that our, the bottom of that oval is probably gonna be around fifteen feet. So I don't think it'll be a, a hazard for any, uh, vehicles driving down the alley. Those are my comments.
You know, you're talking about.
Thanks, Tom. Tom, do you have to elaborate a little bit more too about the sixty versus forty-two? I mean, the sort of width, the width of the logo and things like?
Yeah. Yeah, when I started my business, it was in my gar, my garage, and the biggest sign I could have was a two-square-foot sign parallel to the street, and nobody had a problem finding me. I can tell you that, because I started my business in nineteen ninety-nine, and I'm still going.
Mike, can you read the city's recommendations on this? Because, you know, we're all sort of torn on this, so.
Troy, I apologize. I just pulled out my, my book, and were you asking me to read something specific from the ordinance? Was that it?
No, the city's, the city's recommendation.
Well, the city's staff recommendation is, you know, simply the, the ordinance allows for a projecting sign in the B two district, forty-two inches. We have a awning already there that sticks out forty-eight inches, so, uh, but the ordinance says forty-two inches. It says six square feet. Um, you know, the position as far as the size, um, to me, isn't as much an issue. It's up to you folks because it goes, you know, we have projecting signs at Clam Lake Beer. Um, the one in the Masonic Building is new. Um, they replaced similar with similar, and in fact, the new sign they put up is slightly smaller and lower. Um, the Cadillac Four Theater, that went before you folks because of the height. Um, the other stipulation in the ordinance for this, and I've actually pulled this out, um, and I'm going to find what I'm looking for to read here, and it actually concerns the height. It basically says, and mind you, projecting signs, at this point, were only over the sidewalk portion of Mitchell Street. But it says, no portion of a permanent projecting sign shall be less than seven feet from the underlying ground surface, ground surface. Um, the wall mounting bracket, the wall mounting bracket for the sign, uh, shall be less than five inches now. Now they're getting into pole signs, but the projecting sign, no portion of a permanent projecting sign shall be less than seven from the underlying ground surface. It also says, no portion of a projecting sign shall be higher than fifteen from the underlying surface. Provided, however, in no case shall any portion of the sign extend above the wall. Um, so this is kind of interesting too, because with respect to a wall sign, a wall sign is supposed to be underneath the second-story window, and certainly not above. And with a projecting sign, uh, they do not address the second-floor windows that I'm looking at. I don't know if that answers your question.
Mike, does he need a variance for the height then too?
Well, the way I'm reading this,
We, I think we'd be under the fifteen feet, so.
Yeah. Um, it, it's, it's very interesting because I'm, I'm looking at the wall sign, and the wall sign. Um, bear with me here.
Nick, I thought you said the bottom of the sign. I thought, uh, the guy said the bottom of the sign was going to be at fifteen foot.
Uh, Tom, can you clarify? I, 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 I don't, um, I'll, I'll wait for Tom to chime in on that, but I only recall a conversation pertaining to the, the, like, the snowplow trucks and stuff coming through, and it needing to be high enough for those to have, right? So, Tom?
Yes, this is Tom again. Again, what I'm looking at is the, the, uh, drawing that we have with the sign superimposed on that, uh, back wall when you're looking, uh, south. I know from, from the street level to the bottom of that canopy is ten feet, and when I do a rough kind of scaling, it looks to be about fifteen-foot clearance.
So it's, it's pretty much protected by the awning that's already there, so I don't think an issue of, like, snowplows or anything, that would be, would be an issue at this point.
No, but according to what Mike said is, uh, ordinance, it can't be that high.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, excuse me for now, I'm gonna speak here briefly. Um, with respect to the wa, the wall sign, the height, wall signs adjacent to and facing Mitchell Street, which this does not, must be lower than the second-floor window sills or fifteen feet, whichever is lower. That's very specific to Mitchell Street. The height with respect to a projecting sign just says, no portion shall be higher than fifteen feet. Um, another question, um, is technically, anything that's over the right-of-way of Elk Avenue is going to have to have city council approval to infringe over a right-of-way. So, you know, we can talk this back and forth.
You guys can't see it, but, um, you, we've already been approved by city council to, uh, because we have to install a, um, ADA ramp.
Right.
Running against the building, well, maybe four feet wide or, or what have you. So, I mean, the projecting sign is just going to be entirely over the ADA ramp. I mean, there's not going to be, uh, you know, so to the extent that we need approval to encroach into the right-of-way, I mean, we've already been granted that approval, be it for the ADA ramp, but I don't know how, um, you know.
Why was that not included in our packet, Mike?
Pardon?
Why was that not included in our packet?
Um, I, John Wallace just kind of interrupted me here, and he explained that the, the design, the engineering and design of the handicap ramp have not been approved yet by the city engineer or city council.
It has been approved by the engineer and EPW, but it still needs council approval.
Right. The, the ramp has been approved by the city engineer, Department of Public Works, um, but it has not been approved yet by council.
Okay.
John, I thought we could do that administratively. What is that?
John, um, Nick, he just waved his head no.
So, I guess we're learning two things tonight.
So, Nick, why don't we make a motion that we approve the signage upon the city approving the, you know, ADA ramp? Because then it, obviously, it's not going to be an issue then. Just put it in contingency to that. So that if the city approves that, then we approve the, the signage as they presented it. Anybody else have an issue with that?
Are you, are you gonna, I apologize, Troy, are you, are you going to include something with specifics on dimensions?
As presented. In other words, whatever, whatever's presented in their, their application, if the city approves the ADA ramp.
But Troy, that sign is still going to stick out other than that ADA ramp. ADA ramp is only going to go out four foot, if I am not mistaken, right?
Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I don't have the dimensions on that. I could check the site plan here real quick.
I have a more general objection. I don't think that we meet the standard of a practical difficulty, a hardship here, so. We're talking about little details, but I think the, the overall issue is that we need to have a practical difficulty to approve a variance.
Do you want to make a motion then?
I'll make a motion then. Nick, do you have anything else for us?
Um, no, I was, I was just checking to see if I could give you the dimensions of the ADA ramp, but, uh, I, I don't, I don't have those at my fingertips. I apologize.
Mike, if it went down to forty-eight foot, is that still over the variance?
If it extended out.
Forty-eight inches instead of fifty-four inches. Right now, they got it for fifty-four inches.
Oh, the fifty-four, but that doesn't include the bracket that will have it, uh, off the wall. You follow?
Oh, I, yes, yes.
So there will be a bracket coming off the wall. And again, the canopy is, the current canopy is forty-eight inches. Um.
Yeah, Nick, I understand that they got to make the D smaller when you make a forty-eight-inch sign, but I don't think that would be much of a, I don't think that would be that bad, really.
Yeah, I mean, I, I can't, um, I mean, I'm, I'm not ready to speak to that on, on this evening's meeting. I mean, if, um, if we were limited to the forty-eight inches, I mean, we, we'd probably review that in, in concert with whatever options we have, you know. I mean, to Mike's point, I mean, we got the windows up there. A wall sign's not really going to work. Um, you know, but we could maybe do a wall sign on the little corner of the south, um, you know, elevation there, but, I mean, you know, now, now we're talking about, you know, twenty, twenty-five to fifty percent of our traffic. So, um, it's, 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 it's a, it's a tricky situation. I, I, I respect you guys considering it, you know, um, and, you know, I mean, again, I'm, I'm just a small business owner trying to put effective signage up and, um, trying to, you know, be as cooperative with the municipalities that we're working with without, you know, um, while, while trying to accomplish our goals, so. I, I appreciate you hearing me out. Uh, thanks for your time, and, um, you know, I'll, uh, I guess I'll, I'll mute here and listen to the rest of you guys' deliberations.
Okay. Well, do you have a motion or, or what? Or more questions? Or more comments?
How far is the inside of the sign from the building or that bracket? Can we gain anything moving it closer to the, uh, building?
Not enough to say it's worth by a couple inches.
That's all.
Okay.
I think we need another successful business downtown, so, I mean, I'll make the motion that we grant the variance. I'll, I'll just throw it out there. I, I don't think that this variance is going to make a huge impact. That street is not a busy street. It's not well-traveled. I, I, I think it's needed to make this business successful, so that's, I'll throw that out there. I'll make the motion. We grant it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hey, Mike. I've got so many papers and the ordinance out that I'm losing track of it. Here it is. Okay. Uh, so the motion, uh, Mike basically said, uh, to approve the application as-is, and Carl seconded the motion, so the, uh, you have the concept and so forth. Um, and so that's what the vote is going to be, is just to accept it at this point as-is. Baron Nine City Council at some point is going to have to approve the projection over the right-of-way.
One other thing, Mike, do we have to say something in there about the height?
Um, I mean, I don't think so, because the ordinance is pretty clear that, uh, I mean, unless they think they need to go higher than fifteen feet.
I thought, I thought it said that'd be under fifteen foot.
Or under, right. If, if it's under, I mean, if they think they're going to go higher than fifteen feet with it.
The bottom of the sign was going to be at fifteen foot, I understood. Tom, was that correct?
I dig this out. I don't know if the con, let me dig the concept out. I truthfully don't. No, it gives a specific height off the ground.
I'm just looking at it. There's nothing about that.
It does not say anything about the height, Nick?
No. A little bit earlier. It just, I lost it.
Then the, then the sign permit and the building permit would be, you know, would be based on it being top of it being below fifteen feet.
Oh, that's the only one. Get some papers.
Sorry.
Is it a situation that it has to, it has to stay within the fifteen G?
Yeah, I don't even, I mean, if it's going to be under fifteen feet, um, and Nick is confident with that, I don't think that even needs to be added because that is a part of the ordinance.
Okay.
That, that's, that's crazy that a sign is to be under fifteen foot. I mean, when you got trucks going through there and stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, are all the signs above the thirteen, fifteen foot? Or below fifteen foot?
Well, no, because they don't project over, well, yes, some do. For example, that was a part of the variance for the Cadillac Four Theater. Uh, they technically made their projecting sign smaller. It was closer to the building, but it was up higher, so that was a part of theirs. Um, I mean, you folks can throw, you know, a height limitation i- if you would like. I mean, if you want to say instead of fifteen feet, uh, you know, seventeen feet or sixteen feet, I mean, that's, but, but the motion is to approve it, uh, the variance application as-is.
The foolish part is, I don't think they would put a sign in that a snowplow would take out. I mean, that would be kind of foolish as a business owner to do that, so I think that they would probably know what the height would need to be, and that their application would be substantial. I don't think we need to change anything else.
Okay. John Wallace just, uh, spoke. He looked up. He believes the handicap ramp coming out from the back entryway is three feet out into the right-of-way. I, I can take a vote as-is, and then if you folks want to amend and make a slightly different motion, we can. Nick?
Okay, I'm ready.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna take a vote on, uh, Troy's motion to approve the variance application as-is, seconded by Carl. Bontrager?
Yes.
Avilio?
No.
Knight?
Yes.
Alt?
No.
Nichols?
No.
Walkley? Enzick?
Yes.
Okay. The, uh, vote was split, so it did not pass. Uh, you folks are certainly welcome to make a different amended type of motion with conditions if you wish.
Or you can, you can go to Circuit Court if you think we did wrong. Okay. Continue on with the meeting. Get my cheat sheet. All those papers here. We got any table items, do we?
Uh, we do not, no.
Okay. Lovely comments. Oh, it was a good one, election of officers, can I speak to this year?
Well, last year, the election of officers, we had Nick as the chairperson and Sherry as our vice chair.
Yep, I guess I'll stay if you want.
I move that we.
Go ahead.
I move that we retain the same officers as last year.
I second that.
Okay. Alt?
Yeah.
Nichols?
Yes.
Enzik?
Yes.
Vilio?
Yes.
Knight?
Yes.
Walkley, Bontrager?
Yes.
We will continue this year with Nick as our chair and with Sherry as our alternate, or our vice chair. Obviously, doom grass can change their design, and if they still want to go outside the parameters of the ordinance, they can come back, you know, they would have to change something, but my own personal opinion is, they've got to get some things straightened around with council relating to how they're using the right-of-way that extends into Elk That's all I have to say.
Okay.
I don't see how they're going to put a disability ramp in there with that telephone pole there, it looks like that telephone pole's going to be right in the way of that, isn't it?
Actually, what it is, if you look at the back door, and here's where we've got another little issue, they may have actually already built it, and it is a, from what I looked at last week, because that doorway is more or less at ground level, or just above ground level, it's a very slight gradient going up to the level of where the door is, so it's not like a lengthy handicap rank, ramp that needs to, you know, run parallel to the back of the building. There's very little slope there, and I think it may have had more to do with just meeting the degrees of slope versus the gradients right now. And I would have to look at those engineered drawings and, and I'll certainly email you folks and let you know. I can certainly take a look at that, and I'll just email it to you, I'll get a, you know, copy, and I can email it to you, so you'll know exactly what their handicap, plans for the handicap ramp are.
Okay, any other comments?
Mike, do you know how the gas station is going? Is that?
Uh, oh, the Chris Oil, the Chris Oil.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything going on there, yeah.
They have purchased both the site of Payne Tire, and they have purchased the fifty-foot from the owner to the west, so that purchase is completed, and in fact, I talked with their attorney's offices just today to get the form submitted so that they can combine the two lots into two, or into one, because when that lot in back was sold, the fifty feet was sold, it was big enough for them to do it and have what's called the remaining parcel, which was the original parcel, still meets all of the criteria for the B3 district, but selling them fifty feet, if you were to create a new lot, it wouldn't be allowed because it wasn't wide enough to meet the ordinance, so, part of the, part of them purchasing the fifty-foot was that within a short, quick turnover, they have to combine the two lots into one, so basically, the Payne Tire site is being combined with the fifty feet they purchased, and the Payne Tire site will basically just be larger square footage to fit the Chris Oil station there. I believe they may have already submitted some of their construction plans for review by the building department, the building inspection firm.
Well, there was water going through there, wasn't there?
Oh, it's a big sewer line, yep, oh, that's going to be expensive to move that.
I understand, they got it set up where they don't have to move it.
I don't.
Talking to Rob and Tom.
I will check, but I'm, in my mind, I'm a hundred percent that they got to move it, and it's completely at their expense, I.
Yeah, that's true, like I said, last time I talked to Rob and Tom, they said they had, well, they didn't have to, they had to move the power line, the electric line going through there, but they weren't going to start townability down until springtime.
Okay, that could be on that, but as far as the utility line, the power pole's not as much an issue as that sewer line, that big, I think it's a twelve-inch or a fourteen-inch sewer line that runs through where they wanted to, want to put the building, and, yeah, we're, I can't imagine our utility director would let anyone build a building over the top of that.
I don't know what the story was, how they cured it, but they said they didn't have to worry about it.
Right, right. I believe our utility department at all, I mean, they resolved what they're going to do or not do.
Yeah, that was, like I said, last time I was talking to Tom and Rob about it.
Great, well, talk to you guys later.
Well, join the meeting. See you all next month, I, yeah, I'll see you all next month.
Thank you, everyone, for attending, and if I hear anything new with regard to a amended application with some new details, anything like that, I will certainly forward it to you, and certainly, Carl, I'll get my hands on, I believe, what the drawings are that the city engineer is going to approve or has approved for that ramp, and I'll send it to you too, just so you understand and know what's going on.
Thanks, Mike. Thanks, Nick.
Thank all of you, I appreciate it.